Okay.
Um, it's seven oh three, I'd like to call the order of June tenth, twenty twenty five, City of Norwich, Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting. Um, all called Edward Pabberlock, Robert Burns.
Present.
Dr. Travis.
Present.
Dave Martin, present, Mark Benjamin.
And.
And staff. Chuck, ring your enforcement officer, Catherine Knowles. In quotes, Diana Rhodes. Director, Director of Plan.
Planning and Neighborhood Services, yes.
Planning and Neighborhood Services. Um. Communications. Pictures. Okay. Set up since of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the draft memo of meeting that stated, um, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, has written with no corrections.
Okay, I second that.
The motion is, what's going on? Revert and out. Oh, to see me.
You're not in the better, right?
Yeah, so we need a motion to see them.
Or just he can, the, the chairman can just see them because there's not another regular member. So you can just make it on the record that you're being seated.
Okay, all members present are seated.
Thank you.
Not realize.
Bob and Dottie.
Yeah. Okay. Second.
I second.
Um, all those in favor?
Up inside.
And everybody.
Dottie.
David, bye. Which passes. Um. Old Business? Uh, saying old business, no. Um, new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion either new business to suspend the standard format for the agenda and change to a format that hears the hearing for the appeal. And once the public hearing is closed, we hear the discussion, we go to the discussion portion and to expedite tonight's meeting. That's motion in a second.
So just to be clear, nothing's gonna be missed, we're just.
Correct, 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 we're gonna go from the public hearing on, on the appeal. Close the public hearing and then move to the discussion portion for that same appeal before. About this second.
Alright. One second. Good. All those in favor?
Bobby, next, I.
And everybody.
Dottie, bye.
David, bye. Passes. Uh, Rich, can you repeat that, repeat the first? Let me go on. Minutes, please.
Okay, so first is going to be, I read the legal notice.
Yes.
Which is B twenty five oh six eighty six McHenry Avenue. Relief from zone regulation section one point one to reduce the site. To reduce the side, to reduce the front yard setback from twenty five feet to one foot in the rear yard. Setback from twenty five foot to one foot, the increase, to increase the lot coverage from thirty three point ninety eight percent to thirty six point eight five percent or twenty five percent as well. For the construction of a ten foot by eighteen foot shed property of Virginia E. DeFoss. Application of Virginia DeFoss Assessor's Map ninety three, block two, lot nineteen, multi-family zone.
Um, can the applicant, um, come up?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, physically.
Motion.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you can say your name for the, uh, for the just reporting secretary and your admin and the public motion.
Okay.
Virginia. Hold on one second. They haven't opened the public hearing.
No. You.
You need a motion to open the public hearing, so somebody needs to make the vote to open the public hearing that he just read the information about it. So.
Okay, make a motion open that. That format, but. Second. All of them.
Yeah, all those in favor?
About Phoenix, I.
Fine.
Dottie, bye.
David, bye. Push the passes.
The hearing is open, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Virginia E. DeFossi, A's of Keenley Ave, Norwich, Connecticut.
It's with you.
My son.
I just. Thank you. So, uh, in your own words, can you tell the board what you'd like to do and more you wanna do?
Well, I had a shed and I redid it. And at the time that I redid it, my son came down and, um, got measurements of how he could rebuild it. And he did build it bigger. And, um, he didn't go to zoning, he didn't know that he was supposed to. So he built the sheds and, um, we just had our roof repaired. And I think at the time, after the roof was repaired, someone came and saw that the shed was there and that was there, so, so, um. Yeah.
Rich, can you read the exhibits into the order?
Yep.
Also.
Okay. Well, one is the application. Two is the butter's letter, three is his EBA legal notice. Four is the field card. Five is the one hundred foot of butter's map. Six is the butter's list. Seven is the Google Street View from September twenty twenty one. Eight is the Google Street View from July of twenty twenty four. Nine is McKinley Ave, rear yard image of April of twenty twenty five. And ten is eighty six McKinley Ave, site sketch.
Purpose. But may. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, the purpose of the zoning board, it'll see, is to, um, assist, uh, with the homeowner acquiring what they need because of a hardship, so can you tell me what hardship?
The hardship is, but I didn't realize that the shed wasn't okay and we built it in seven thousand dollars and I need a shed for my yard equipment.
I did, I, the building department before constructing the shed, um, and let them know, like, replacing existing and let the tortoise Murphy ask somebody to approve it. And we still know before building the shed, um, so it wasn't brought up, but I didn't realize, don't we, would see an issue? Um.
We did talk to our neighbors before we built the shed. And, um, everyone was okay with it. So I wasn't thinking I was, um, gonna be upsetting anyone or doing anything that I shouldn't do.
Uh, so this question, staff, did we get any positive or negative feedback from the butter's letters that went out? No, I received one phone call and it was from, uh, a butter across the street. And I explained what it was. She said, oh, it doesn't affect me. And that was.
There should be a letter in, from, I'm McDermott, the rare setback that was submitted with, of support for the shed.
He would be the one if anyone was gonna complain and he was not.
It would be in the exhibits here. If it was.
And he said it was available, if anyone needed.
So, exhibit G, which we have here, is the old shed. Like, where it was. Right. And exhibit H is the new shed that exists now. So you basically made a little bit here and also changed the orientation.
Yes.
And, uh.
Good.
Good.
Uh, in your contact with the building department, did you indicate that you were going to increase the size? And we were gonna replace this wall?
I, I did indicate it was under two hundred square feet. I, I, I read what the stuff was online before contact, and I just wanted to verify and. So, the hardship is, uh, primarily supposed to be and there's also. Physical features of the, the property. Which, with that, like, everything in our property would fall within the setback. There, there's literally nowhere on our property that isn't in a setback.
And that is, yes.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, that letter's not in the exhibits, which was everything that was submitted, was the letter.
It's on there.
Was it uploaded to the website, to the portal by chance?
So it. I've been on the portal.
Okay, yeah, cuz the variance application is what we have here, and if it was uploaded to the portal, I may have missed it, not knowing it was uploaded after the fact. I can download that and make it part of the record. There with a one minute, right? Get it.
This letter definitely board us.
Yep. How old was the existing shed?
About twenty years old.
It's been a while.
Yeah, I lived at that address for forty two years. Might have been older, but it was about these twenty.
Next, then, the reason for the. Pretty nice.
Yeah, it was damaged by hazards.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a.
There's a hole underneath, the floor was collapsing. Almost broke. It is over the end of the new shed.
Good.
Had babies.
So, so I have a letter, I'll, I'll read the letter. All right, and to the record, it's from Thomas McDermott dated uh, five four of twenty twenty five to the Zone Board of Appeals, members of the zoning board. My name is Tom McDermott and I am the homeowner at forty seven Perkins Ave. The home to the rear of Mr. Fossey's shed that is within the setback area. I have lived next to the family at eighty six McKinley Avenue for forty years and have a strong relationship with them. They consulted me before building the shed and it's what, it is a welcome addition to the neighborhood. It is well constructed and aesthetically appealing. I am writing to give my full support of the DeFossi family being granted a variance to be able to keep their beautiful new shed. The shed's location causes me no disservice and I am, have no concerns with its proximity to the property. Thank you, Thomas McDermott.
Oh, right.
Right.
Right, they have the.
Look, so we typically, I'll explain it. So tonight we have four board members. So, for the zoning board of appeals to make a decision on a variance or on an appeal of a zoning officer, statute requires or affirmative votes. So generally, the, the applicants are always given the opportunity to decide if they want the board to decide on their application this evening or continue it to the next meeting in the attempt that there's five members seated. President. And now, the reason for that is there is a single no vote on your application that then the application fails. If you suspend the application till the next available meeting, the next month, I think it is. Um, I don't know the date, but, um, then you have the opportunity to have more than one vote, that, um, negative vote. And, uh, your appeal can still get through, so it's a majority rule at that point. Uh, as, as you said, it's state mandated for minimum. So if you, um, before we close the public hearing, if you elect to postpone until the next meeting, um, this will, this will continue the hearing. And we can hear more testimony at a later day and, uh, your application will still process. Uh, if you elect not to, the hearing will be closed. And then we go into private, well, private, public discussion. Um, and, and the decision that we make will be final. So, uh, we want to make sure that you're aware of that, you had that opportunity.
I guess you've heard that, what, what do you think you wanna do? Because, as Bob said, your odds are better.
It's five, five. And we do have five people normally.
Normally, we have five.
Totally, it's up, it is up to you.
It's up to you.
July.
July.
Continuation to July.
In the rain, okay.
Well, that's why we have this here.
As soon as she said something, I think. I just said, I'd rather, I suppose it would be better for me to wait in case.
It's really your, it is really your. Okay. Um, I wanna ask, there's.
Yeah, I wanna ask if people here in the public, okay, there is somebody here.
All right, is there anybody here to speak in, unless you wanna say anything else? Is there anybody here who would like to, um, speak in favor? Name, speak in favor? Um, anybody, uh, speak opposed? There it goes.
The motion to continue the public hearing to July eighth.
Well, um, based on the decision of the applicant, I would like to make a motion to spend a public hearing for B twenty five oh six till the next available, uh, zoning board appeals meeting.
Regular.
July, regular meeting, July eighth.
Second. Okay.
Right, so.
Thirty two second. All those in favor?
Bobby, next, I.
And everybody.
Dottie, bye.
David.
All right, thank you very much, we'll see you.
Don't. Your motion.
Motion to open, um, B twenty five oh eight thirteen, uh, three thirteen Canterbury Turnpike. Uh, request from relief of zoning section one point one. So.
Fine. What is second? I'm watching now. Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Bobby, next, I.
And everybody.
Dottie, bye.
David, which passes. Public hearing is open.
They probably.
He started to. Yeah, we didn't finish it, but you.
Okay. B twenty five oh eight three thirteen Canterbury Turnpike, we will, we will, we leave from zoning regulation one point one to reduce the front yard setback from fifty feet to twenty eight feet. To construct a ten foot by nine foot front porch and associated stairs property of Robert M. Demoing, Demoing, uh, at all, application of Robert and Demoing, Assessor's Map thirty eight, block one, lot seven, R forty seven. The exhibit list, one is the variance application, two is the butter's letter. Uh, three is the legal notice. Four is the field card, five is the butter's map. Six is the Canterbury Turnpike and Butter's. Letters, uh, addresses. Seven is the existing steps, eight is the proposed deck and nine is the site sketch.
Uh, yeah. Or state their name and address for the record?
I am Robert Demeling. Three thirteen Canterbury Turnpike, Norwich, Connecticut.
State what you're like doing, why you need a variance to go do it?
Well, I have a house that was built, uh, I think in the sixties, I'm not sure. Um, has a cement stoop that has settled. And at this point, the cement stoop is eleven inches below the door sill. Which is, uh, pre- creating in my humble opinion, a hazard, a tripping hazard, not only for us. Uh, who, when we bought the house, we were in our thirties and now we ain't. But you'll, you'll notice in that picture, I, uh, I actually, my, my daughter and I put together a couple of two by eights to put another temporary step there so my, my wife can get in. Uh, she has more difficulty than I. But even with that there, she cannot step into the house. She has to grab a hold of the door, jam and pull herself up and in. But, uh, it's, it's just too low. And I wanted to get something up near the door so that, uh, it would be more convenient. This would also, uh, give us I don't know what the technical term is, but, uh, 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 better steps going in without, you know, it wouldn't be such a great rise on each step, they'd be, they'd be, uh, easier to get in. Uh, the contractor that I've um, hired to do this is, uh, Richard Stags. He did my back deck, uh, about twenty years ago. And, uh, I was very thrilled with what he did. Especially in the steps that I was talking about. Uh, that I don't, right? Richard has a, a creative computer system, I can't imagine it's gonna be that many steps, but regardless, uh, the, uh.
It's right.
Down to your pounding.
Yeah. I do see, I did, I missed that, I see that now. I'm sorry, you said what?
Oh, it's going all the way down to your foundation, I don't think you're gonna excavate your backyard to get that fence.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we're not, we're not going that far. The, the yard, uh, I don't know how many pictures you have of this, but, but the yard, the driveway is below the yard.
Yeah.
So we have steps up and then what he's gonna build is gonna be steps down to the steps that come up.
And drive, set back. So. Well, this was six. You'll probably answer it. From what I see from the. Is it, uh, G one?
Well, that's kind of what I envisioned, so I I kind of chuckled when I saw, so that, that it were.
Let me ask you, um. That, uh, in this, in this particular effects of the, uh, you have, we should go to some of these and. The steps and your sidewalk.
Yes.
I'm assuming, can I make the assumption, the safe, safe assumption that your deck is gonna come out to the uh, outbound side.
Outbound side.
Side walk and then.
And then down.
Travel down to.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Which, which will fix two of my problems, if you notice in that picture.
Quite.
Uh, I've got a, I've got a cement slab that's uh, kind of, very sad angle.
Your contractor gonna take those out?
I assume so. I.
It's around below.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that set of steps in the whole area that's, that's settling?
You mean, is the house settling?
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, to the extent that.
Yeah, it's, and I'm assuming the house is not settling because the steps are getting lower and.
Okay.
My, you know, the.
Steps are.
The steps are getting farther away.
Independently.
So.
Is there erosion?
No.
Combined?
Not that I, not that I've seen, it's, it's possible because this was built on, upon a slope. But, uh, what, whatever caused it to settle, whether erosion or what, I don't know, but all I know is, uh, all I know is it's a lot lower than is comfortable to get into the door.
Sure.
Uh, my question is for, for staff. Um. Is this another situation where zoning has changed over the years? Right, the house once complied at thirty feet and now the new zoning requirement is fifty foot per setback? Making the front, the entire front of the house non-compliant, conforming, not conforming? But it was, I, I haven't looked at the history, but I'm gonna assume that the zone or the setbacks changed, which now the front yard setback is in the house.
Correct.
Uh, probably down the red line, like, that's why, you know, the, the existing stairs were existing, not conforming, if you replace like for like.
Right.
You can do that, this is a different configuration, a little bit larger, that's why you had to come for a variance. And that's, that's the distance of the twenty eight feet from where they're coming out to the front.
Yeah, right. So anything that you know that's slightly different?
Or like, can require.
It's like for lunch.
Okay. Yeah. Wouldn't recommend you try and build new concrete steps today in the same location, you're gonna face with that, that here is. I have no further questions.
I have no problem. It's cool. Talking, yeah, um. You have the option to, Russ, to choose.
Why are we both? I heard the option and I'm pretty confident that this is a reasonable request and I'm willing to take a decision this evening.
Good, your choice. You have any questions?
Tell me.
Um. I'm gonna ask if anybody's, um, or against, and then we give you, if anybody's against, we give you the option. Same. Um, is there anybody for? Everybody for? Anybody opposed? Opposed? You're none, anything else you'd like that, once we close the public hearing? Uh, you can't have any.
Well, one point that, that I would make is the fact that although the deck is coming out farther than the stoop did, because the steps are going down at the same place that the sidewalk is, theoretically, the whole entry is the same distance from the road or the setback or the imaginary lines that, and I don't know.
Okay.
But it, it actually, it covers the same area that is now covered by the, the stoop and the sidewalk.
Well. Okay.
I'd make a motion to close, uh, public hearing twenty five oh eight B. And move to discussion.
Second. So. Five seconds, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Bobby, next, I.
And everybody. There you are.
The house hearing is closed, I'd like to, well, I already did it in my motion, uh, move to discussion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based on. Uh, so, so really quick, just to clarify, so now this was approved, there's a fifteen day appeal period? Uh, we didn't, we haven't approved it. We're, we're gonna discuss now and approve, but they just made it.
No, he didn't make it, but he made it, probably under discussion, he's going to make it approve.
That was what it's motion.
No, 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 no.
I apologize. Yeah, no, to discuss, then, well, once we discuss, we'll. Intention. Or deny. So, um, yeah, motion, motion to open, uh, discussion portion of, uh, B twenty five eight three thirteen Canterbury Turnpike. I, I'm sorry. Who? For discussion. So.
So. Yeah, can we just have a clean motion?
I'm sorry.
You don't need to make a motion to discuss once you close the public hearing, it automatically falls into discussion.
Oh, we don't need.
That's right, we.
Yeah, you don't need to make a motion to discuss, cause you close the public hearing, now you discuss it and before someone makes an, a motion to either. Approve or deny or variance, you're, so you're good to not have to make a motion.
Doing that and, and uh, being corrected all the time as well. Uh, so my motion was to uh, approve the application. Uh, B two fifty, twenty-five oh eight three thirteen category turnpike. And now.
Hey, I'll second.
Okay.
Oh, there's usually, just really quickly. Need to state reasons on the record of why you're approving a variance, just to make sure, okay?
We'll do that before we actually vote.
Yes, okay, good.
So, um, I open and um, I, I. I certainly feel for the applicant because my home is in the exact same condition. Built by the exact same builder and the steps are in the, um, he has a, a temporary, um. Filler on his stops, top step. I have a four inch piece of concrete that someone put there long before I bought it. And I can tell you that I have had to tell every person leaving my house. Watch out for the first step. And it makes it treacherous and dangerous. And so I feel that what he is doing is an improvement to the safety. Of the exiting of this house and that's why, um, I made the motion to approve the application.
And the hardship?
The hardship being that with the zoning regulations changing thirty to fifty feet. Even with the thirty feet, you still require a two foot variance, but being that the house is already non-compliant. Uh, I, I think for non-performing, um, that he's going to need uh, a variance regardless of what he does. And.
And the reason that, right? Yeah, I agree. I agree, just because it's. I'm not performing, so anything adds to the fun. Um, with our experience. Um, and uh. These steps will uh. Be safe improvement and aren't um, in real. Level or increase the overall footprint of the, the step walkway.
I'd like to add one more thing, I do think that a small deck and side steps would be. Uh, an enhancement to the overall look of the property, which would be an enhancement to the overall of the community, so. Be benefit of.
All right, um. Uh, all those in favor?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
And everybody.
And now, so now, I'll, I'll let you know, there's a fifteen day appeal period. So, this will most likely go in the newspaper in the, in the public notice. Friday of this week. From the day it's publicized, there's a fifteen day appeal period, so I can't issue the zoning permit until that appeal period is passed. So we're. It'll be July, before.
No.
Well, no, a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And, and do I get a letter or?
Yeah, you'll receive an approval letter.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll receive a, an approval letter with instructions and a, a document to pile in the city clerk's office.
Okay.
And then, once that document's filed in the city clerk's office, that stays with the property in perpetuity. Um, so that variance is on the land. For these stairs, you know, forever. And then the zoning permit is issued.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
You're gonna give us a.
Sure.
Point how to.
Sure, yes, I'm Deanna Rhodes, I'm the Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services for the City of Norwich and Appeals of, of Decisions of ZEO are not common. So I wanna make sure that everyone knows the procedural process, including the members of the ZBA. So, um, it is a public hearing, so what will happen is you will make a motion of, you know, read the public hearing, we'll read what it's about, open the public hearing. Um, the first person that will have an opportunity are the, uh, people who are making the appeal of the zoning enforcement officer decision. Um, that's John and Michelle Wilson, um, they can provide their testimony information, we'll call up at the computer as you tell us what you, you know, wanna be shown. Um, speak about it, if you have any witnesses, make sure when you come up that you state your name, um, spell it, if it's, it's not, um, the app, the people who have submitted the applications, if you have any witnesses. Say your name, spell it for a recurring clerk, uh, and then provide that testimony, so you have, again, the, the person who's making the appeal and any witnesses. After they feel like that they've, they've made their case, um, then what will happen is, um, you can do some questions if you'd like at that point, if there's some specific questions. Questions and answers go directly through the chairman and, and so if you have a question, you shouldn't direct to them, you should direct it to the chairman to ask that question. Um, and then you respond back to the chairman. Um, when you feel that you're ready to listen to the other, um, side, uh, Rich Shook, uh, will be leaving the table and going sitting over. Now, actually, he's going to sit here because he's gonna run the computer, but he will have an opportunity to then do his, um. A presentation regarding the appeal and then he will be able to call witnesses in support of his side. Um, then you can, again, ask questions of Rich and the witnesses that are here, um, through the chairman and then go, you know, back and forth that way. Um, then if you feel like you want to ask questions back of the, um, of the Wilsons, you can do that until you feel satisfied. Um, and then you would close the public hearing if you felt like you wanted to do that. I think the opportunity, because there's only four members here, the same situation should be granted, um, that you should, um, that they should be made aware that five members is, um, the normal seating. Yes. You could ask for this public hearing to be postponed, is there time, Rich, for them to postpone? You could ask this public hearing not even being open tonight, um, would you like to have? Yes. Yes, so would you like to post, ask to postpone your public hearing to the next month, to July eight? So, I mean, there's time to do that without an extension, because what was the date of the submission? Just wanna make sure time wise that. You submitted two months ago? May, may.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so you're next, you're May twenty-eighth, your first meeting was this meeting in June, so you're still fine, they have sixty-five days to open a public hearing by law from the date it's received, which is ten. So. We're going to figure that out, you'll know as well, and what will happen is at that point would be that, um, the. We would have a special meeting, they'd have to find out when they're going to have, like say that they find out soon that that next meeting, somebody's going to be missing out of their five. You can, we give you the opportunity to say, do you wanna just, again, or they'll have us, ask to have a special meeting to figure out a date where you're all five available, okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, we do have a quorum, we just don't.
You have a quorum, but you have to have four affirmative votes to, to support you and you have, like I said, you have better chances when the full board is sitting.
No, it's not.
It's not a simple majority for the variance or to appeal, it has to be four out of five seated, but four is a, three is, uh, four is a quorum, but that means you need to have them all in your favor, so that's, that's the. So would you like to ask to have this, um, postponed, the public hearing postponed? Okay, so you wanna have it opened and then continued? Okay.
So, what else does that take still?
Okay, hold on, we're gonna discuss dates.
So the date received done here. April twenty.
But that's not what an officially was, was taking care of, right? That was, that was a question, okay, well, when was it paid to take care? Okay, so you did submit in April twenty eighth, so then that would mean that it got received at your May meeting.
No, we don't.
Did you not have a meeting?
We don't, we don't formally receive them.
No, but by law, but by law, I'm gonna talk about by law here, you submitted April twenty eighth, it would be received by law at the next regular meeting, which would be in your May meeting.
Correct.
Okay, and you didn't open it at that May meeting, you open it in June, so that you'd have sixty-five days to open it, you should open it tonight and you could, I think that by law was open it tonight, if that's okay. Everyone, so you can at least start the clock, okay?
Yeah.
So we're gonna start the clock and, um, so again, ask questions back and forth.
Yeah.
We're going to probably want to spit and continue the public hearing so that you could have potentially five, but what's opening here, what they have to say here, here the side of, um, Rich and his, uh, witnesses as well. Um, so that goes on the record, you don't have to repeat when you continue, continue a public hearing, just so everyone, you don't have to repeat what you said, you just, the next time, everything that's said at the previous meeting is all continued forward, except for any new information, okay? Um. That's where we're at, oh, and just so everyone knows what the decision making is, not that we're making decisions tonight, but I'll put it on the record, um. For an appeal, kind of, that, that's not the same as a variance, there's no hardship requirement, you have to either affirm the zoning enforcement officer's decision. Or you can overturn the decision based on the, the information you hear. You can with the, if you overturn it, you want to give guidance of why you're overturning it, obviously, and if there's any directions, we're overturning it because of this and we want them to do this, you can give guidance if you want. So, um, but that doesn't look like it's gonna happen tonight, cause you're gonna wait, but I wanted you to know that, okay? So you can open, make a motion over the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the appeal of the decision by the zoning enforcement officer related to the issues of certificate of zoning compliance. Related to construction of the family home located at ninety-nine old. And very terrified, the application of John and Michelle Wilson.
Thank you.
So.
All those in favor?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
Ninety-nine.
Name and address for the record, please. Yes, name is, uh, John Wilson. He live at a hundred old here in Great Turf, right? It's my wife and shell. Bill Wilson also, and we've been there since nineteen eighty-eight.
Right.
So real quick, bear with me on. What we show up there, just guide me.
We print it out. I can, I'll pass those out if you don't mind.
There, everything that was submitted.
Is, yeah, this just outlines that.
To just discussion points, I don't.
Okay, yeah, so, so I'll be. So we, we need, uh, we'll have one, I need one.
Rich, so, so this is a.
This is.
Something I'll receive that. Permission, anytime.
Yeah.
So do you need to read that one first? I just want, should we leave things in for the?
Um, sure, I can do that if you'd like, or what, we can wait to the next meeting, because it's not really that important to read it then.
All right.
And, um, and what we can also do, since there's so many exhibits, is we can, um, put the exhibits, like this list, up on the screen next time. And you could look at it instead of reading it, it's seen, seen for the public and it's seen for you and you just can make a motion to accept the exhibits that are listed and not have to read them.
And, okay.
Make it easier. I did, I'm gonna accept it number thirty-eight, is it? Oh, I'm sorry, the other sheet, forty-one, same you.
This is a PowerPoint presentation that you'd like to.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right. I didn't wanna ramble on, okay? All right, so, um. Yeah, we can do that one. I email.
Now, I open.
Okay.
Close these.
Yeah, close them all. I'm closing meeting one though.
No.
Did you have it up though?
There it is.
Hi.
So this is the approved, um, plot plan. That I'm seeing. When the property is supposed to be graded. As you can see, there's supposed to be three paths from the water. The, the property is basically, um, a bowl. With the. On that, you can see that on the east side. The northeast side, you can see, so water is coming in from the drain property. I can't get in there, oh, right down here. Um, and that is an elevation of two hundred and sixty feet. Everything else around the property is higher than that. It is supposed to flow, it was supposed to flow across. Two, uh, two ditches on either side of the leaching field, according to the inset right there that's in red. With a little mound of two sixty-nine in the middle of it, so that was the primary path where the water was supposed to go. And then was supposed to go down along the road to the house in the back, I believe that is eighty-seven or ninety-five. And then there is a, um, the three foot wide, um. I'll call it little rock waterfall. That all the water flows through. And that is an elevation of two sixty-six. There's a two foot drop across the whole property. From this northeast corner to that southwest corner up there. Then a secondary path was supposed to be, if you look at the elevation lines around the back of the house. Cause that was supposed to be at, at highest, I, you can see that I put, I circled and read the elevations that are two hundred and sixty-eight feet. So I figured that was supposed to be a two sixty-nine at the most. The water, if it, if it overflows the two, um, water courses in the front, it can flow around back. That was basically the plan of the way it was supposed to be. My final rating was supposed to be. What drawing uses?
Okay, you can't ask any questions.
Oh, I knew you said the drawing it was. So.
The plot plan, right?
Yeah, this was, this was, this was the site plan that was approved for construction.
So in the top of it, if you could scroll up. And circle then red. You can see in the, the top right corner up there. There are three, the box, the red box.
Yeah.
You go to the right.
Try to control this inside, zoom this. It's my, this after.
That's good. If the red box, you know, my light.
Those are two of the requirements. You say, they say general requirement. Not guidelines. They're not, uh, suggestions, they're requirements. And it says grain shall not be done in such a way, just divert water onto the property of another landlord. Without the express consent of that landlord and the commission. It also says, bills shall not encroach on the natural water courses or constructed channels. And then down on the lower, um. Right side there, there's another requirement that says, no change in plan location or elevation shall be made, not notifying the engineer and the proper town authority. And I'll show that these, these three, uh, requirements have been violated and what has happened. Is that, well, we know the asphalt, but the, the driveway, the house and the, the filling of the back has caused a water barrier. Which is putting flooding on the neighbor's property as well as across the leaching field.
If he's gonna call up the asphalt, if you'd like him to, would you like him to follow that up?
I don't know, we see what the next slide says.
Okay, thanks.
Um. So the next slide, I had, um. Let's see, I've been going back and forth about this for at least a year and a half and two years. With the zoning department, the engineering department and Uncas Health District. Um. And I have asked each of them. Combined, at least seven times, I counted them up in emails. To provide me a rationale for why they would not follow that original plot plan that was made. I have never gotten an answer to that question. I think there had to be a hardship, cause the requirements, you're supposed to follow the requirements. And no, all I've gotten was some hypotheticals from Mr. Shuck and one of his emails. Of what could have caused it, but not what actually did cause it. So if you could bring up photo, anything? So if you could bring up photo A, please. That they have them. So that is the. The footing, I think they call it, it's the bottom of the foundation. That's the the bottom, bottom of the house. This picture was um from September of twenty three. And as you can see from this picture, there is absolutely nothing but air. It would be prohibiting the flow of water. Because as you can see right in front of that um excavator there, you can see the driveway is already elevated there and it's caused the flooding over here and it's causing flooding over there, but this is where the leaching field went. And as you can see around the back, it got dug out even more after this picture, but there's absolutely nothing prohibiting the water. From following the approved drawing and making the water be able to flow back there either.
We're looking at this as if we're standing on the street.
Yeah.
That is correct, for our house, yeah. Now standing on the roadway. And we can go to photo B. This is that east side. Um. This is with the uh the wall of the slab built and put in. The slab is approximately two and a half, three feet high because this is an elevation, the top of it is a two seventy one, according to the drawing. Then this stone here was brought in by the builder and it was laid down to cover the footings. So again, there's nothing there inhibiting from following the plan at all, except for air. And and the stone that was brought in by the builder. You could go to photo C. This is around the back of the house. As you can see, the amount of fill that was drawn in as the stone was was put in there. But it hasn't gotten around the back of the house yet. And as you can see, there's there's nothing there prohibiting from following the plan. Nothing at all. There's just air.
Great. Pause the initial. So. Each of these pictures, because it opens up a different window, I'm gonna show these pictures again. To show they were in order.
Okay. So the next one is photo D. We're now about a year later. This is uh July, mid-July. The leach field starting to put in.
Bear with me.
Yeah, this one that let's get caught up on the.
It's real list.
Yeah.
Let's see, he's got the next one, Rich.
Yep, well, I wanted to show these because I haven't, because each one of these is open in a separate window, they're not in the same shared window.
Okay.
So now I have to go back to my list and you what?
Deeply deep.
And Delta. So now, D.
So D is the leaching field, as I as I said, was supposed to happen, was supposed to happen. Was there was supposed to be the ditch at this height right here on this side of the leaching field and on the other side of the leaching field. And as you can see, when the leaching field went in, there's absolutely nothing prohibiting. From following the approved plan. All and you can actually see it's actually. A little bit lower right now than the adjoining property where the wa- most of the water is coming from, because there's a big hill behind that white house where all the water drains down. And goes into this ditch that's right behind that excavator and then it flows straight across there and goes down past the uh. The driveway and the loophole in the back of the property.
So is it your contention that the leaching field is already installed in this?
Oh, yeah.
Um, actually, it's in photo E and photo E, if you look, it's more farther along. That is the leaching field pretty much completed before it was covered with the final grading. And as you can see from this picture, there's also still, there's nothing prohibiting the two ditches on either side from letting the water flow through.
For people that are watching, just if there's anyone, the the windows that we're looking in and the portal that that's there, that's facing towards the road. The road is running along.
Road is where the the.
Cones boxes and that.
Left to the port of body.
Okay, so the so but you can't see, so the other white house is is facing a different way. It's not facing.
No, trace anything. This is this was west.
This is the.
It's west.
That's what I'm saying, that's the front of the house. The road is actually behind this red box.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to say, just so the public can know we're doing this, but that's the bit of you're looking at. So you're kind of on the side yard, kind of looking at the side of the house towards that.
This is west looking east.
Yep, got it, thank you.
And that, see the tree right there, that magnolia tree, that first tree in their yard? Just to the left, that's where the ditch comes down and all the water flows down the hill, collects in that ditch, supposed to go across this. And then wind down to the back to the hole that was two hundred and sixty six feet of elevation and fall into a. A wetland that's back there because it's all filled with alder and stuff and there's frogs in there and stuff. So the next thing I would like to discuss, so there's nothing prohibiting it, that's my point. Um, Mr. Shuck requested an as-built. Um, to be done on the property. I believe it was around, I don't have the date. Anyways, um, it was it was after July, after the leaching field was put in, and this is the as-built, and as you can see, I circled. Um, the elevations that were above two sixty eight. And if you zoom in, you can see that the lowest elevation is right there in the first circle near the driveway. It's basically a two sixty nine and four inches. I'll call it two sixty nine and a half. And then it goes up to where the road is, which is actually at two seventy and eight inches. But the control point over there with the arrow is is two seventy one and four inches, so the road has actually got a little bit of a down pitch to it. The house is obviously part of the water barrier because it's at two hundred and seventy one feet of elevation. And I don't know why Mr. Shuck didn't ask for it, but there's no elevation in the back. But I have a picture that shows that elevation has to be at least two seventy as compared to the um, the foundation itself. So they created a water barrier between the back, because the two seventy, the house at two seventy one, and this is at two sixty nine and a half. So it's a foot and a half too high. Whenever it rains, one and a half inches, you'll see, it just fills with water. So if we can show photo.
A very, I'm just, oh, sorry, what what area is it that fills with water?
This whole area. On the side here fills with water.
Okay.
And as you can see, the property line there, it also spills over into the neighbor's property over here and fills the neighbor's property also. And I couldn't pass a video to you folks, but when we did have the rainstorm, there was a couple of inches, um, there was a couple inches of snow on the ground that one time we got snow. Um, usually the water would come down the street. It never crosses the road because the road has got a peak in the middle.
Right.
Um, and all the gutters are on my side of the road, so they're on the bottom of your screen there.
Yeah.
So the water just rushes down the road. And it goes all the way past here and down here. It usually just spill into this property and then it would just go away. But because there was two inches of snow on the ground and actually went all the way down to the. Past the white house, past about where that driveway, that white house was, and then it crossed the road. So it ran off across the road this time, which I had never done before.
So that water that was standing there filling in areas that in contact with the house.
Um. No. Not at that time.
Okay.
But yeah, we didn't really, we have not had a large rainstorm in like. Two years. The last biggest one was in August of twenty three, I believe we got eight inches of it.
Hmm.
And that's my concern also. Um, as we'll get into the calculation, the calculation was just with merely a three and twenty four. Um, which happens every four years, that's supposed to be one hundred. So kind of unrealistic, yes, and I'll get into that later.
Okay.
So if you can show. Photo F. So as you can see, the back is not. Low enough for the water to get around and in the back. And the driveway is too high for the water to get across the driveway, so it just fills. And the property line is about where this Christmas tree is right here.
Yeah.
And cross cuts across kind of like that way at an angle to that telephone pole over there. So majority of half of the water was on the neighbor's property and half of the water was on ninety nine and ten and turn.
And that's the leaching field where that green pipe is.
Right.
Where the what?
Where that pond is, you see the green pipe?
The green pipe over there by the by the truck, that's the end of the leaching. Yeah. And the water is trying desperately to go across there. The way the plan was, like you see that little thing forking out there. Um, partially was trying to get across there, but of course they made a water barrier with the driveway and all the other dirt in front of the house. They can't make it. So it just fills it. Depending upon the rainstorm. If you could open photo H also.
Oh, excuse me, what day, what day is it?
Um, I'm 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 gonna go through each one of them individually, but F was in December of twenty four. December eleventh. Actually, if you do photo G, we'll just go in order. This one was on December nineteenth. That was a smaller rainstorm. As you can see, it it doesn't take, I think it was like a half an inch on that one, the one before that was probably an inch. Sitting there for days. As you can see, and that was this, so that was seven days later, and then the next photo H was on twelve thirteen years Eve when it rained.
That's the next one.
Yep, that's H on twelve thirty. All the photos have the things.
Yeah, right up on the top.
Take it also for you guys' convenience.
Good.
Yeah. And then if you do full photo I. This one was on February seventeenth, because we had that dry spell and that was a two inch rainstorm. And um. It's just sitting on top of all the snow made the made the um, all the water just sit, sit there. Um, yeah. And the little mounds or more mounds of dirt that were brought in to try to to fill it. Um, which obviously is not gonna work because the more you fill it, it's just gonna push it forward as as you'll see in the other photos. Because it's got no place to go, right? You're just making this buffer area be smaller and you're gonna push all the water forward and onto the neighbor's property.
Garage door, it's ice there because the water is trying to go across, so it's all ice there.
Now, these are all before. Um, the drain pipe was put in. That's why they all say before on their uh, on their titles.
Okay.
Would you like photo J?
Um, no, we're gonna email B.
Let's get right to the top, Richard.
Yeah.
Oh, I should have put that. I actually missed that. Can you go back to that? What? That was document three.
Document three.
Yes, so this is the Uncas Health District's inspection of the sewage disposal. Um, I had called the state of Connecticut. They said that I can't tell elevations just by looking at things. So I requested this report, and if you scroll down, it gives you the actual um elevation from a surveyor. Of the elevation of the leaching field, if you're scrolling down, please. So you see something, that's the actual red elevation of the leaching field. It's at two hundred and sixty eight feet point zero seven, and point zero seven equates to a half an inch. So it is a half inch above. The plan, but that would be negligible. You would have a little puddle at that point in time. As opposed to the uh, the foot and a half, I mean, the two feet in the back that they raised it up. You get a big pond, a big puddle. If it actually followed the plan, it would only be off by a half an inch. Sorry, I missed that. Should read my slides.
Okay, you'll have time on next box to do anything that you missed on.
Thanks.
You wanted email B?
Um, it was in email B, yes. Scroll down in the box. It was from you, Mr. Shuck. Keep scrolling down. Now you'll see it. So I have a wrong reference here. Oh, no, we passed it. Maybe I had the wrong ones. Anyways, I had asked Mr. Shuck afterwards to provide me with a rationale for why he was allowing this to occur. And not following the plan because it made a water barrier. Like I said, I had talked to folks at the state of Connecticut. They said they did not have jurisdiction. This was a local um zoning thing. And then I needed to uh talk to my local folks. So I asked Mr. Shuck for a rationale as to why he was not um following the approved plan. And his response basically was, and I I'm pulling the email. He said. That you, meaning me, you are asking for strict compliance with a paper drawing. This is not feasible. There is not a construction project completed precisely as it was drawn on paper, especially when it comes to the final grading. There are always changes in the field based on site conditions and other factors that may. Cause foundation elevations to change, grading to change, and the location of a structure to change. The as-built will provide me the information for we to review for zoning compliance. The as-built will be reviewed by myself, meaning Mr. Shuck, the zoning enforcement officer, for zoning compliance and city engineer for site design standards. So I didn't get an answer. I got some hypotheticals, I got some maybes. So I replied back that I I said I must clarify that I'm not expecting strict compliance. But I am asking for a very, very good reason why two thirds of the lot was filled with sixty plus dump trucks of sand and stone, so that is two to three feet above the grading. I am curious, however, what constitutes justification, as there is no apparent site conditions that would warrant that much fill. The foundation elevation, house location, and septic leach field, which you have cited in your email, are all according to the drawing. I request that both zoning and engineering please provide me possible justifications for filling a lot to that extent when all other aspects are as specified. And that that's just one that's like I asked that like seven times in different ways, that same question, and they never got a reply. And as far as I'm concerned, I have pictures, there is nothing there prohibiting from following the piece of paper, the zoning approved plan. That everybody approved, all the various disciplines, Uncas Health District, zoning, building and engineering, that they cannot follow the plan and eliminate the water barrier. So then. In the last week of January. The builder, the uh, the engineering, the zoning, and the Uncas Health District convene the meeting at the property. Um, after that, because I I had asked um to be told what they were going to do, they didn't, they didn't, so I called the Uncas Health District, I called Mr. Coughlin. And I asked them what the what the thing getting met for and what they were, what they were doing. Mr. Coughlin told me that um, he had all. Ad hoc agreed to put in a drain pipe. With very limited loads of dirt were needed in order to put this drain pipe in. Um, I've requested some documentation. Nothing was provided. I don't even know if documentation exists for this drain pipe. But all I do know is when the drain pipe was put in, another thirty additional loads of dirt were put in on the east side where the uh, the puddling was. But they raised it even higher than it was before. So before I estimated it was at two hundred and seventy because it was like a foot below the foundation. Now it's right at the top. So those thirty thirty extra loads of dirt basically raised that location to be two seventy one now. As you know, the road is not even two seventy one, so there's no water going through the back anymore. Because I got two emails from Mr. Shuck and engineering Mr. Dewey stating that that was supposed to be um, like a failsafe. If they if it couldn't get across the driveway, but the failsafe is not there anymore. Because they didn't put in limited amounts of dirt. They put in thirty additional loads of dirt and raised it up. So my wife and I, I got very concerned about this. Um, and we called the uh, the city manager office. We called um, Ms. Barbara Rosa. And because we're not, we were not getting any response from zoning and we were not getting any response at all from engineering at that point. Um, and Ms. Barbara Rosa called and she coordinated an in-person meeting with me and my wife and the engineering department, Mr. Boo. So we had the in-person meeting with with Mr. Dewey and the engineering office over by um, Hart's Nursery.
Thirty one Clinton, I think the.
Thank you. And regarding the drain pipe, um, and Mr. Dewey was nice enough to um, to send me a uh, a calculation. And if we could bring up that calculation, it was an email D. Because I had concerns about the uh, the calculation. It has, it has some assumptions in it that I that I challenged. At the very bottom. Yeah, right here. So the first one, if you could just scroll up a little bit in this calculation. Up a little more, is that point six one acres. So Mr. Dewey was telling me that the drainage area. For the site was only point six one acres, even though behind the white house that you saw. There's a hill that goes up another hundred and twenty five feet behind it that was draining down. He was telling me that, um, that water was not going to make it into the ditch and thus into this property. But I challenged him because I lived there. I went out during the rainstorm and I looked at it. And it was coming into the ditch. So a lot of water coming down that hill, going into that ditch. Going into the, contributing to that ponding area. And, um, Mr. Dewey agreed that he would come out and perform a site check. But I never heard anything back of a site check that was performed or whatever, or whatnot. Never heard anything back. The other thing that if you scroll down a little bit in his assumptions. Because this gains us time for the flooding. It's going down, please. A little more. Is the buffer area. So he says that the buffer area has a low point of two hundred and sixty seven and a half. I think it's actually supposed to be two hundred and sixty eight feet, as I said, that the. On the northeast corner where the, it comes in. So that is contributing to the, the extra size of the buffer area. As well as the fact. That the thirty plus extra load, the dirt that they, that was brought in now has reduced the buffer area now also. So now there's basically hardly any buffer area at all compared to what there was before. And I never got a new calculation. Taking that into account. And then if you scroll up just a little bit. I also challenged Mr. Dewey on the once in one hundred event rainstorm. That's once in a hundred year storm. I looked up what that means. That's actually like a three to five inch rainstorm. It, it doesn't happen once every hundred years. As you know, climate change has happened. If you look at the data, it probably occurs about once every five or six years now. And as I said, in August of twenty twenty three, I should have put down there. There was an eight inch rainstorm. Actually had a rain gauge at that one. So I know it was eight plus ranges because they dumped it out and it filled again. And, um, I had talked to Mr. Dewey about providing me a calculation with that amount of water to see what would happen. And I never heard anything back. And I was, I was willing at that point in time to compromise. If he did the calculation with all the proper things, the water still wasn't coming across the road, then I, I might have let it go. But these folks just didn't keep their word with me. They didn't do what they said they were going to do. So I'm at the point now where it's just. Forget it. Make it be per the plan. There's no hardship there. There's nothing stopping but air from following the approved plan. At the end of the meeting. Mr. Dewey said that he understood that we were taxpayers, that we had been here a long time. And then he gets it. And he said that if, if the drain pipe that they're putting in was not going to be adequate. That he would order the, uh, the extra fill to be removed. And, uh, as you can see in the pictures that I'm going to show you, that didn't happen. So in the next, um. They started to implement the drain pipe.
What's your number? What you like to go to next?
J. So as you can see from this picture with the drain pipe. It has an uphill pitch going around the back of the house. Because when they, when it was installed, it should have been. If the top foundation of the house is at two seventy one. And they put in the drain pipe, it should have been three feet at least. Below. The L, below the top of the foundation, because that's the elevation the water comes in. There's no way that that's three T feet because you can just see that it's only about. A foot and a half deep. And then they just laid the, uh, the pipe down, down the hill. So it has an uphill pitch on it.
Which we were told was going to be a basin, like a drain, was going to have stones. And a drain, and we have a catch basin, and then the pipe would go out and bring the water.
Was supposed to be, because I was very concerned that, that this kind of, um, design. There's nothing over the top of it. It's just going to fill. It's just going to fill with dirt and mud and get clogged. And then it's going to be ineffective. But it's also ineffective already because. It's, and you can see in the other picture, it's at least a foot and a half above, above the bottom of the ponding, and it has an uphill pitch. So this, this, this drain pipe, the thing installed is at least two and a half feet above the bottom of the ponding. So it, it isn't, and it. It's ineffective. Basically ineffective. Right? So now if you go to photo K. You can see that little, extra little up pitch on that one at the very end. Then it got filled. That was the next day. And then if you go to photo L. And again, I expected this one to be like a gutter. It was going to go down three feet. The grid over the top with stone on it and a pipe coming out the bottom. That is not what this is. This is just an extension of the pipe. It's very important, my wife and I, to see where it is in relation to the door. When I show you the other pictures, you can, you can approximate where it is in the pictures. But I couldn't get high enough to get a picture of it shooting down. But it's almost even with, parallel with, with the door. That's how high up on the hill it is. So now if you go to photo. M. You can see the result. This wasn't even a big rainfall, by the way. Um, you can see what happened with all the thirty. Loads of dirt that came in. They filled all of that. The drain pipe is not working because it's parallel with that door up there. So as you can see, it's like two and a half feet too high with the pounding down here. And every time it rains, the, the builder has pushed the, the pounding. Mostly onto the neighbor's property and forward. That's the first place that it filled during a rain, during any rainstorms. So if you go to email D. Let me scroll up. So I sent a bunch of emails at this point in time because it looked like it was getting ready to be approved. So I asked Mr. Dewey. Please respond with a rationale. And this was his response right here. Oops, go back up. Said that he stopped by yesterday. This email was sent on. Three twenty one. And he said, um, basically that the drain let, the drain inlet was higher than he wanted. Which is an understatement because it's two and a half feet too high to drain anything. And he said that there was an underdrain, which there is no underdrain there. It never happened. Uh, it did happen. You guys can correct me and show me pictures of it. But what I showed you is what happened. That was it. And it states that when he came on the twenty first, there was still pounding in the area. And the last photo that I have would be photo N. If you go to, so that was the, the, the water. That Mr. Dewey had seen from that rainstorm on three seventeen. So that would be photo N. And it was still there three days later. Because the drain pipe is not doing anything, right? Because the drain pipe is up there, parallel to the door, up on the top there. And the water, the pounding never even reached the drain pipe. The only place the water had to go and the reason why it somewhat might have stopped. Is because it stopped raining. Otherwise, you can see, it's going to go across right in front of the garage door right there because that's the lowest spot. And it also push, pushes the water forward because I am actually standing at the edge of the road, taking that picture. So it pushed all the water forward. And like I said, Mr. Dewey admitted that it, it wasn't working, basically. And he said that there was an underdrain for some reason, and there is not. And, um, he stated three days later that there was still pounding there. So if you go to photo O. That was on the twenty fourth. It rained again.
And when he installed the drainage, thirty more loads of dirt were brought in.
This was, uh, a week later. This was the rainstorm on the twenty fourth. It was a very small rainstorm, but it filled it again. And as you can see, there's also a little puddle there right next to the road that forms. Then you go to photo P. This was on the twenty sixth. We had a very long dry spell. This was actually. A good sized rainstorm. It was probably like three quarters of an inch, but since it hadn't rained in so long, um, the ground soaked up most of it. Then if you go to.
And where the grass, in the grass, as I, you can see at the hill, and that's where all that dirt was put.
Yeah.
Which pushes all the water.
And as you can see, there's no way that that is not a path to the water anymore according to the plan. The, the road, the road is lower than the path in the back. It's just, there's no way that water is ever going to flow there. It would come across the road first. So if you go to photo Q. Now, these are all after the drain fixtures. All of these ones was installed. The drain was supposed to fix it. This was on May fifth. You can actually see how deep it is kind of there.
And he's thrown gravel there to try to soak up the water. Otherwise, that would be a total puddle and go across the driveway.
If you go to photo R, that was on the ninth of May. As you can see, most of the water is over the neighbor's property because that stake right there, these stakes right here, that's the property line. So he basically said, screw your neighbor and put all the water on the neighbor's property. I think the neighbor's leaching field is right in the front, right here. I'm not positive, but I know it's not in the back because it's all ledge back there. So they have that stake, that tree, and that stake are the property lines all over the cell phone pole.
You see the stake? Okay.
Now, if you show photo S. This was on the fifteenth. So it was six days later. As you can see, it's over the top of the leaching field in this one. Again, the water stays for, for days before it finally drains because all it can do is soak into the ground. Then photo T on the twenty second.
So you can't ask any questions. It's not the time yet for the poll. So write your questions down. Other pages, and we'll, we'll come back to you.
So this was on the twenty second, the rainstorm of the twenty second. Basically, anything over a half inch. So. Email E. We contacted, um. The city manager's office again. Sent some of the pictures to folks, said, what are you doing to fix this?
Let's continue down on this page.
I believe it was a. He passed it along. Right here, this one. This is her response when I asked her what they're doing. She said that she passed it along to the engineering department and the director. And by the way, Brian Long, who is the director of engineering, through this whole process. Never replied once whatsoever at all. Was requested to reply. Never replied. Never had the decency to pick up a phone call, answer an email, and he was on all these emails. Never replied once. Which is ridiculous. I even left him a couple of messages on his phone. Still didn't reply. But anyways, um, as you can see from the response from, um, Ms. Barbara Rosa. She said that she was relying on calculation. Which, as I showed you, I thought the calculation was flawed. I asked for an updated one. Never got one. I have no idea what the calculation represents that she's relying on right now. And, um. Obviously, she also is. Relying on the engineering calculation with the drain pipe. And as I showed you, the drain, drain pipe is completely totally ineffective. It's not doing anything other than allowing air to flow in from the top of the hill around the back of the house. And then I asked one last time for a rationale for why they were not, why you were not. Asking engineering and zoning to, uh, to follow the approved plan from the beginning to fix this. And of course, I got no response. And then on April first, April Fool's Day, um. The zoning department approved the certificate of zoning performance. Even though I had a water barrier on it, which I, it's just like unbelievable. I couldn't, I didn't understand that. So on the twentieth of April, I submitted an appeal because I do not understand how that could ever get approved. So basically, the summary, I think the CZ, the CZC that was issued is an error. Um, the water barrier violates the three requirements on the plan because there's a water barrier on it. It puts water in the, the neighbor's property. It, um. It's obviously inhibiting the, the natural flow of the water. And it is changing the elevation. And, um, I don't know if there was any revised plan put in or anything like that, but I have no documentation approving. The new elevations that were put in. There's nothing. There's no documentation. And the drain pipe was just like they met one day. Ad hoc came up with this idea. There's no documentation for that whatsoever at all. So the water was put in incorrectly. Because there's, there's no plan whatsoever at all. There's no drawing. There's no nothing. And, um, like I said, engineering even admitted that it, it's not working to where they had wanted it to. And it wasn't definitely not as it was described to us. And now, and I'm going to say here again, said many times, there is nothing on that site. There is nothing, no hardship, no, not anything but air. Prohibiting the following of that approved plan that they put in originally. And, and fixing this water barrier so that it doesn't exist. And, um, I think that they should be following the approved plan. That's all for today.
Okay, I'm going to do have any, did anyone here, while it's fresh in their mind, have any questions at this point before we go over to the zoning enforcement officer?
What kind of gravel? What building they used?
It was a mixture of, it looked like, um. It wasn't round stones. It was like it was crushed rock. They were probably a half inch to one inch. And then it was, um, a mixture of sand.
But thirty truckloads, which is dirt.
I mean, I had pictures of all of them. I didn't want to put a hundred, I know, put a hundred, hundred pictures of dirt running. But it was a mixture of sand, um, the, the crushed stone, small crushed stone. And just regular dirt. And towards the end, it was just a mishmash of whatever. There, there was one that was just pure rocks that were probably about that big that was dumped in there. There's, there's various different things that got dumped in there. I have pictures of them if you want them. I have about seventy five pictures of loads of dirt. Because we just couldn't believe the amount of dirt that was coming.
Delivered, it's all, was all mixed or was it on a layer basis? Was it by laying?
No, no, it was, it was all just put in there and, and as, as time went by, we watched the builder, he would. Take the dirt out, put dirt back in, take the dirt out, put the dirt back in, especially in that spot on the east side where all the pondings. And it just got all mixed up together. And literally at least five times the dirt was moved around on that side of the house. Yeah.
And the pipe was put in in the middle of the window. He had a harder time.
It's still frozen when the pipe was put in. Yeah. And again, I can send you the pictures if you want me to fill your email.
Well, no, what, what we could do is, is if you have more information than, since this question, and you could think it will help you, just print, print them out.
If you think, if you think it'll help, I can send it if not.
You. No, okay. So you can next month bring a picture and we can, you know, email it and we can put it up on the screen and you can show that if you'd like to, but whatever, you know, because again, it's your presentation and your testimony. So, um, if that helps, it's fine. Um, any more questions here from the? Thank you. You may take a seat.
Thanks. Well, I.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, um. I understand your concern with change in the neighborhood. I do not understand. Your. I don't understand. Are you appealing this because there is a threat to your property from this?
Oh, there is runoff. I could show you the video.
To your property?
To, to my neighbor's property. Right next door, and she would be in an address of one oh two, I believe. And she actually, I did not go out there and video this, but she actually had, um. Coming down her driveway, um, there was a bunch of sticks and stuff from one of the larger storms.
Let me ask, are you advocating for your neighbor?
Yes. She's older. She's not going to go.
For yourself.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could certainly have her come because she, she would, you know, whatever, whatever.
She's the neighbor in the white house.
No.
Yeah, next door to you. She had a bunch of debris at the end of her driveway, which also concerns me, because our wells are right next to each other, and that water just keeps flowing down. Because behind my house, it's very, very wet, it is a swamp probably for three, four months out of the year. And our wells are back there, and um, yeah, all of this debris across the leaching field, coming across the road, going into our wells is. Is not a good thing. And I have been supposedly assured that the leaching field is going to work if it has water on top of it. But I have an email from the Onkus Health District telling me, if there's pounding on top of the leaching field, you aren't contact us. So the two just don't jive with each other, if you're telling me that it's okay, but I gotta tell you, if there's pounding on top. And you go through all this effort to fix the pounding with the drain pipe that doesn't work, and then you improve it, if the whole thing just doesn't make any sense whatsoever at all.
I wanna go back to the neighbor who, the neighbor's being affected by this, the neighbor's across the street.
No, she's right next door to us.
Oh, okay.
I think to clarify, you're, you're saying across, you're your next door neighbor, but you are across the street from this property, I think that's what he's asking, is that correct?
We also talked to the neighbor behind, the red house behind, he has concerns, but he's not going to come. Or something, he doesn't want to. But to do, to complaining until it actually becomes an issue. Um, he was concerned about the pipe, that it, when it starts working, that it's going to flood him out. Yeah, he's lucky right now, the pipe's not working and doing anything, so. This is, is um, you can see right in his yard where the ditch keeps going back to the little hole that's back there. And his leaching field is literally like right next door to that ditch that went back there. So he's concerned also, and our neighbor next door, she's also concerned with all the water, because it did come across the road into her yard. When that snow was, that two inches of snow was on the ground.
Richard, can I see um. This drawing, that the line, drain, lines, or? Do someplace.
It's not one. So I live directly across the street. From the house. My neighbor would be right down here, that we're saying that she got the water. And then ever, then we, we used, she passed away, there's new neighbors across the street where the most of the pounding is occurring in, and um.
Question on this drawing is, who put the blue lines on it?
I did. To show where the water was supposed to flow. I also put the red circles to show the two sixty-eight elevations.
Circles are just. Highlighting?
Yes.
So you did not annotate the elevation?
I did not, no. This is the original approved plan that I received. From Freedom of Information Act.
You, you.
And I just put. Yes, over the top. Give you that with that. Just for ease, so that I think, so you guys knew what I was talking about.
Do you have a degree of any kind in astrology, or?
I work in electric boat, um, the ship control system. As an engineer, I used to be a supervisor, um, a system, system engineer, talk to fluids guys all the time.
Can I ask your experience in land survey or development?
Um, I don't really have that much experience in that, no, that's not my um, degree in, in, in that, no.
All right, those are my questions, thank you.
But I do know water flow doesn't flow uphill.
All right, so what's gonna happen now, if that's okay, Chairman, can, I'm gonna ask Rich, he's gonna sit here only because he's gonna be able to. I'm gonna turn it over, Rich, you can take a seat then, and the audience for a moment. And Rich, you can start your presentation or call your witnesses, however you'd like to do that, witnesses would call, say your name, spell it for the record, please, as well. Did you have any other witnesses, by the way, that you wanted to speak tonight? Okay, thank you.
Uh, for the record, I, I'd like to give this gentleman's name and address, um, I know you've been asked a question.
It's not, yeah, because we've kind of stopped him, so don't listen to anything, because he didn't have, he was not able to speak yet. Yeah, the bridge calls you, and then you have an opportunity as a witness to speak too, okay? Thank you.
So. A lot to respond to. Um, I think the memorandum that I distributed to the board kind of sums up. I understand Mr. Wilson's frustrations. He asks questions and expects answers. You can't always answer every single question somebody asks. And as far as. An opinion on my rationale for doing something. You know. It's my reason. I don't need to always explain myself. The plan itself, as I explained, these plans are drawn and. And I'll defer to the the city engineer later, but these plans are drawn on a computer. There's not a topographical T-two survey done on the property, which is gonna give you one hundred percent accurate. Topographical when we start to begin with, unless somebody goes out. And T-tos are typically only done when you're doing these large, major construction projects, something in a flood zone. But for your standard house site, they're using topographical measurements off of aerial, aerial topographical. Some spot elevations, they're not going out and grabbing the full contour of the lot. And as far as adhering exactly to the plan. There's not a construction job out there where the grading is ever adhered to a hundred percent. As far as changes made to the site. Regarding septic system, that is, that is the health department, that is not a zoning issue. The grading issues. I rely and fall back on the city engineer. I'm not a design professional. Zoning covers the construction of the house, the permitting of the house. The actual adherence, strict adherence to the site plan. You know, when we start reading into some of the stuff that the surveyors put in and. Maybe Mr. truly can expand on this later, but there's a lot of template and stuff that goes right into. We read through that. But it may not always be applicable to a specific situation. I'm not saying it's not applicable, but not always that. Mister Sylvester has done what I'm asking to do, this started back in September of twenty twenty-three. When a complaint came in, that the house was being built there, and it was wetlands on the property. I had to contact the builder and tell him, hey, I received the complaint, I don't have a certification on this site plan from a soil scientist. He went out. Hard soil scientist gave a statement that there was no wetlands on the property, and it's just continued from that point. I think at this point. I'll wait for the board, if you have direct questions. Or, um, or if you have questions from the city engineer or uh, the sanitarian, who both are in attendance this evening. Jeff Dewey and Dave Coughlin, and the builder is here, Mister Sylvester.
You wanna call any of them up tonight so they can talk, so they don't have to come back next month, if they don't, would I too?
Well, I'm gonna defer to the board, that if you want to hear.
I think they're looking like they would prefer to put it on the record tonight.
I'll ask first, I'll ask um, the city engineer Jeff Dewey to. It just kind of that's regarding.
For the record, my name's Jeff Dewey, D E W E Y, city engineer, I've been taking some notes here. Appreciate you hearing me this evening. Um, I'd like to just.
Jeff Dewey, do you, do you wanna provide?
Does it matter? So while we're on this plan, let's take a quick look, would you zoom out a little bit? Uh, it's, it's interesting, so I don't know if you noticed, a little bit of a contradiction, normally you do not direct runoff toward the septic system. So I was kind of interested that that was like, seemed to be a strong point here, because it, it. Kind of contradicts what you typically try to do when you're designing a site plan. Um, so, uh, let me start, um, marked up under your proof plan as a red box around the E and S statements. Can you zoom on those, please, Rich? So again, keep in mind, as you know, you, it's never, plans are never actually constructed. Exactly as they're written.
Of course.
Grading correct, so that says grading shall not be done in such a way so as to divert water onto the property of another landowner. So basically, with the, the property line between the two properties, most of that runoff is coming from the neighbor's property. So it, it's not diverting water into the neighbor's property, but that water prior to development did run across. The developed property, so that's part of where the pounding is coming from. So it's a mutual, you know, probably half and half of the two lots, so there's no diversion going on there, um. That's a second. Bill should not encroach on the natural water courses, it's certainly, it's not a natural water course or channel. You know what I mean? Um, if you zoom out again, there's actually a catch basin in the road that's right there.
Hold on, he can't speak, you keep your notes, keep notes for next time.
So. Right there. So this is a natural, that was the intent for. However, long ago, that road, Old Canterbury Turnpike was constructed. A lot of the drainage from that road is actually directed across the street. And, and between Mister Wilson's property and like Numb Truck Drive, there's a drainage channel down there, and that's where a lot of the drainage is directed. So and that catch basin is part of that original drainage system. Um, and so where, as, as far as my drainage calculations. Uh, basically, the, some of the property, that neighboring property, the intent is for it to run into the road and collect it. And that catch basin, and then directed uh, across the street and so forth, so I disagree with uh. Mister Wilson's analysis that my calculations are flawed, I use standard engineering approach, I use the rational method, which is good for. Uh, watersheds from between a hundred to two hundred acres. Um, I looked at the storms form, I did my best to try to appease them, and it was obviously not enough. I looked at our storm events from the two-year to the hundred-year, these are typical engineering approach storms. Um, uh, Mister Wilson had said that the hundred-year storm is actually a five-year storm. Uh, in which he did some research online or something like that, and that is not the case, the hundred-year storm is. The civil engineering design one hundred-year storm event.
It's a question for you, is that? Standard for Connecticut, national standard or local, nor which standard?
Typically.
About one hundred-year number you were using?
The hundred-year number, so what I did is I did the two, ten, twenty-five, or hundred-year storm form. Uh, normal drainage design is for piping is for a ten-year storm. Um, so just even looking at a hundred-year storm is way over and above, that's basically point range, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but those numbers, they, they come from a.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, so there's no odds, uh, that puts out the numbers and their standard storm, so basically, here in Connecticut. We have a specific type-three storm event that describes the intensity, so when you're, when you're doing drainage design, you're not just looking at your total inches. You're also looking at the intensity of the storm, which is inches per hour, and how fast it arrives there, as well as what the total range is.
So that, that standard that you were using is, is a published NOAA status for Connecticut?
Correct, oh, correct, and if necessary, I'll be more than happy to provide us, as exciting as it sounds. But um.
Wanna go back to the catch basin for a second, for that curiosity. The catch basins we put in when Old Canterbury Turnpike was.
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Based on your knowledge and experience, do you think that they're adequate for the board?
Uh, so now, that's a very good question, thank you. So, and, and Mister Wilson is correct, so basically, in some respects with what he said with. So the storm events have been getting more intense, a shorter duration and a much higher intensity. So there is this, in the drainage community, drainage design community of the engineers. Is we're starting to be aware of, is our approach to drainage design does not really uh, include. Accurately all the types of storm events we get. Uh, we do look at the largest storm events, like, so uh, what we used to use, like the hundred-year stormer that I was talking about. Which basically is, there's a point one percent chance of that storm occurring in any given year. So it's, it's a very rare storm, it's really not once every hundred years, but kinda you can look at it that way, um. So that storm event is over a twenty-four-hour period, which we now see, we get two and three inches over. The course of two, three hours, as opposed to over the course of like twelve hours or twenty-four hours. Um, that said, at the same time, drainage design is, they've been like state DOT standards for piping. Is only the ten-year storm, which isn't that huge of a storm. So it's kind of a mixed bag of. Um, is it, is it acceptable? It depends on, so if you look at the ten-year storm, um, yes, technically, you know, a twelve-inch piping carry the flow from a ten-year storm. Uh, but is some of the storms we get nowadays more intense? Yes, and it also gets it not just even the piping, but just the great capacity taking the water in. So we are at a point, and as far as in the engineering community, where we're looking at, we're starting to reassess how we evaluate and design drainage. Because these storm events are becoming more intense.
Are you going back and revising any system improvements?
No, because there isn't a town in Connecticut that has the money to do that.
I don't believe the guidance has been updated yet.
No, it's still the standard engineering design, thank you, is, yes, still the same, the same storm events, nothing has changed, and basically, it's a. Uh, a lot of design engineers are being proactive about it, and even though we're not directed to, there's no standards that have been changed for us to do so. But it's just good engineering practice to try to stay ahead of it.
So there was, my question, if you, there was an expectation that runoff from either property. But particularly this property, there was an expectation that. Uh, it was going to flow into the street and into the catch basin that's adjacent to.
Um, actually, no, the, the, the indication what I was looking at is, it's just a, uh, not a huge area from the. Neighboring house, I mean, we're talking a small amount of watershed area, nothing significant at all, less than an acre. Um, would either flow across the driveway kind of as indicated with the blue arrows, um, or flow out the back. I don't know what the actual elevations are with the final grades that we're looking at today.
Um, we don't generally get that with a residential.
Correct.
Property we do, because we have a hard surface and uh, attachment, so that needs to be all calculated.
Right, because it's impervious, where this is pervious surfaces, and, and so the builder did bring in a lot of uh, like gravelly. Type of material and stone as, you know, for Mister Wilson's testimony, which certainly, you know, allows for infiltration into the ground. And so as you know, the same path like on the surface where he wants the, the water to move to the, I think that's to the east. And going out that way, it's gonna do it in subsurface, but it just flows a little bit slow on, it was like. Um, and uh, Mister Sylvester did put in a drain, and, and I wanted to say that a couple times, the court, uh, Mister Wilson was saying that. I had said the drain doesn't work, I never said that. Um, I don't know what the elevations are, and I am sure there is flow in that pipe coming out of there. Uh, the only thing I said is, when you put in the area drain, I wish it was a little bit lower, but that didn't mean I didn't think it was gonna work. Still worked, not as well as I would have liked, but, you know, at this point, I'm sure, uh, at this point in time too, Mister Sylvester could. Take a photo during the next rainstorm, or I could go out there of that discharge pipe and show that the water actually flowed out.
In your opinion, would the drain that was installed, could that act as a weird?
The drainage pipe?
It needs to get to a certain elevation before it receives.
It could, depending on, and that's one of the reasons that I would have been more than happy to provide additional calculations for the Wilsons. But the problem is without having as-built information on what the elevations are, what the elevation of the grade is. You know, it, it's at that point, I, I'd almost be guessing.
And that would be, those elevation. And that would be, uh, those elevations would be the result of a of a different sort of survey than. The final survey for building, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple other things, just so I wanna loop around to make sure I uh. Get in the testimony. Um, I don't believe the. It was said that the lot was built to elevation two seventy-one, which is the road centerline grade. I don't think that is the case. I do believe that. Corner around the patio is lower than elevation two seventy-one. The driveway certainly is. Um, when you go to the Asbilly plan, the garage elevation is lower than two seventy-one. So the 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 water is, it'd be a very, very uh, large storm event for the water to actually cross the road. Cause any problems. And again, like I said, um, the whole thing with the neighbor is. The most of the, most of the water, not all of it, most of the water, he is actually the neighbor's runoff water. More so than the actual ninety-nine old Canterbury Turnpike. And as far as as getting back to Mr. Wilson is, so I had go cut over and above and did my engineering calculations. I met with him, we went over it. He was not satisfied with my calculations. So at a certain point. I just didn't know what else to do to help. This sir out because I had done my due diligence and performed the calculations. And he was not happy with them. He didn't call me per se to say, hey, I'd like to sit down and talk with you again, because that certainly would have. If he had uh, said so. And just and again, bringing up the material that was installed, it was. Granular material as I'm sure Mr. Sylvester would be more than happy to explain better and how we installed it. It was. Kind of made it sound like it was just a a bunch of different. Core material that was just thrown in on the ground, and I don't pretty sure that's not the case. At least that was not the case when I was out there. And any questions that I'm wait? Okay.
Mr. Coughlin. Mr. Coughlin, do you have any comments?
He gets to say his names, uh, please, and on the address of, you're at the August Health District place.
David Coughlin, uh, C O U T H L I R four oh one West Saint Street. So my only clarification on this, I mean. The two parallel lines to Canterbury Turnpike on the other side of the leash field, that's not. It's not designed for water to travel there. We would never do that. We would never approve that. The water would either go over the leash field from a higher to a lower elevation or around the sides. We would never direct water as he's indicated with those two blue arrows. That's, there's not a ditch there. Normally we want a ditch there. We don't want to attract water to it. We don't want it to go where.
Like you're, you did the site development.
So this is, it's a sanitarian or.
So let's clarify what your position is.
Um, sanitary for health district, I did. Uh, actually virtually all the, all the work associated with this lot from the beginning. Planner views inspections. Then meet with Mr. Dewey about the drain. Right now, as far as the Asbilly concerns, the water, if you go to the red plan, for a little circle time. You can look at the elevations that the, on the Asbilly, I think it was. I mean, you have two seventy at the road, two sixty-nine halfway down the driveway, two sixty-nine kind of over those field, two sixty-nine by the. Um, and the driveway, and then it slopes off, exactly what we wanted to do. It's not gonna pond behind the leash field, which is exactly what you want it to be. You want it to go around or over and not sit there on top of it.
And your test points, well, I I didn't see the data for the test point.
That's from the, um, that's from Dutch, right? So that's from the surveyor?
Yes, yeah.
So those are surveyor shots?
And so the test points actually met the requirements for.
Uh, well, elevation wise, I don't really have a requirement. I mean, as long as my leash field is installed per plan or per. Oh, absolutely, yeah, it's fine, so. To be clear, you didn't, you don't develop the design, you review what's. What's added to you and do the, and make sure that it meets the health code, per set houses, based on the size of the house, the festival. Just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't design that.
Yeah, clear. Make sure that was clear here for the record. Don't understand it.
And it is, it is a one thousand gallon system.
Correct.
So during your involvement with this. With the development of septic system. Were there times at all when you had concern about the amount of water that was collecting in the property at all?
To the left, um, I'm forgetting the direction, but to the left as we're looking at the plan, but. Yeah, no, it was definitely a um, a ponding problem. I don't know, ten, five feet. Twenty, fifteen feet from the septic system, depending on what time I was there. Um, did fill it, which essentially filled the hole in and moved the water. Onto the neighboring property for the most part.
Which was the neighbor's water. On most part.
Well, to me it's water.
Well, from the photographs I saw, the neighbor's property is elevated by. And then it's burned down to the property line.
Correct.
There could be an assumption that during heavy rain, that's a lot of.
One hundred percent. Hundred percent. So the water originally during, during the course of the construction was closer to the leash field, which obviously concerned for me. We don't want some water sitting there infiltrating that flooded. Um, he did some site work and it moved it away for me, which for me meets my requirement.
So it's, I'm sorry. That was a, that was a request that you made.
I did make a request of him, um, per Mr. Wilson's concerns. I'd go there and see that.
Okay.
And 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 he was correct. So that's why I contacted Sylvester. It was good to deal with. We pretty much did whatever we asked. And to handle the situation.
Now, I know that Richard signed the certificate. I assume the building department has signed off with CO. And the, no, there's still some punchless items, a couple small things. But as part of that process, you certify that this is.
Yes.
That meets, meets a design standard, obviously, but it meets this, the August requirements.
Yes.
For satisfaction.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I mean, my, in my exhibits is the health districts permit to the district.
Yeah, that was that, alright.
Yeah, that's our plan. That's kind of our CO for a septic system here, earned in the church.
Rich, would you like to find anybody else?
Mr. Sylvester. The members of the board have any direct questions for the. I'll start, I'll start with that. And and then the one thing, kind of for clarification, explain to the board.
He needs to first give his name and all that stuff, okay?
Yeah, but explain to the board what you explained to me about that low spot. In between your property and the White House and where there used to be trees that were removed. Explain to them how you explain that to me.
I'll try to get it done.
But then.
With your name and. My name's Keith Sylvester. I live at seventeen Brad, at in Chapel. And um, I'm the, I'm the builder for the, for the house and I use my LLC to build that, to build the property. So. I don't, I don't know where to start. I'm not, I'm not good at that. Well, I wanna sum it up. But anyways, I'll, I'll try to start.
Maybe we wanna start at D, right?
And I, what we, what we get into, when I bought the property, there was a set of trees between, you're facing the house. Probably on the left side, that sits way up. In my property. There was a set of six trees, about sixty foot high. They were like the, the seed, the seed and tree, sixty foot high, that, that were there. And when we went to take our trees down, the neighbor had those trees taken down as well. That created a bowl. Where all the water is collecting. And when they, I tried to see it and I put some bill in, but you'd have to bring it up about two feet. From where they pulled up the loops out.
Did you show the trees on this drawing so I can see what you're talking about?
Yeah, those, those, those.
So for the record, I pulled up Google Street View.
Please come print this out.
They're not there anymore. No, no, these aren't there. This is, this is an October twenty thirteen.
Yeah, picture.
This is the twenty twenty-four picture. The telephone pole is here.
And what, what the trees did, they did a couple things. They soaked up a lot of the water that came in. And right then.
Yeah.
As the city engineer was saying, right at that point where the trees are, is where the road comes down. Pitches and goes on to the property, which is, is his property, but now it's my property. It's all wide open. And it's about eight feet from the telephone pole on his, his side. My property line is three feet from the telephone pole. Going down, so it's, it's there. So that was causing a lot of the issue with, with that ponding there. And uh, like, what, what Dave said about the uh, end of my septic. Where the pipe is, we'll get some ponding. So we, yeah, we built that up and to try to keep it away. And I'm gonna, I'll fast forward a lot of the pictures of the pipe going from the side of the house to the back of the house. To help the drainage. This is actually, what he took was in progress construction pictures and trying to. Form a more best final construction, but so. We brought the one type of drain, which was a surface drain pipe. About ten feet from the property, then go into the property line and put a different type of drain in. Go into the property, which is a lower piece, and we use holes on the bottom of the pipe. Below the ground to bring the water up from the neighbors to bring it up and take it up and to try to bring that down as well, but. I did not want to go onto the neighbor's property, put pipes to bring back onto my property. So we went as far as we could to make it work and. The pitch on the pipe is anywhere from one eighth to a quarter of an inch. So it's not, it's not a great pitch, but it's. To get, to get it out and and the water does flow. So that's that the left, that's the left side of the house. Now, on the right side of the house, where the water comes from the road, there's no catch basins on my side of the street. They're all on the other side. On the uh, the Wilson side of the street. So it comes down there and wherever, goes down the driveway, the neighbor's driveway and all that and goes. Down. We have a fifteen foot swell area that brings us down, a low spot. Down adjacent to the house and to the back of the house, where the engineer had designed for it to go. Uh, the engineer was Dutch, uh, Charlie Dutch, Dutch Engineering Associates out of uh, Paul Justin. They did, they did this up design and so kind of follow that. And then the septic system that we just endured and like you were saying, we have all the search for all the scene and we have all the search for all the fill. And then, then we have the cover on, on top. So, so you, it, it, it often seen. And uh, and by the way, I'm a civil engineer. So, just, you know. I, I felt that putting it in life was important and and we did. I, I, I used the building department, I used the help, I used the resources to help with this. There were a number of times. Sometimes I, I didn't agree with what they wanted to dump, have done, but I did it and and things worked out just. From, from the beginning, we knew it was kind of a, a, a tough area. So I, I made a. Uh, kind of a, a checklist. The only thing that's. More than an inch or two or so. Or the one from the original, again, is the main floor of the house. We decided to pick it up just a little bit on the inside to be have more insulation. It's on a slab, but we have insulation. You know, we have concrete, now we have two, two inches insulation on top of that, then we got plywood on top of that, and we got flooring on top of that. So effectively it came out to about four, more. If you put a little more concrete, a little more insulation to, to make it, we thought more comfortable and a little bit higher up. And we also, everyone's saying, well, you're right up against the house with your siding. Well, aesthetics was. We thought it'd be better if we brought the siding down one more layer. So we covered some of the, some of the foundations. So we wouldn't have, concrete just shown. We would have, we have three generous houses and. If we thought the aesthetics were better and thus was this. So if they're using those kind of measurements to figure out what the real height is or not. Guess what? Now, the garage floor. Low point, the, the road is. Two seventy-one two, I think. And the benchmark, which is on the corner of the Wilson's lot, is not there anymore. I found it. We came back with the, with the engineer, so, so we can start doing the survey and it was missing. So, there's only a couple of us that knew where it was, because it's only one other person that knew that I told. So we had, so we had put a second benchmark in, and that benchmark is on the telephone poles now. So. So it's on the same side of the street. So there's no. This smaller one for error, and taking it from across the street and the, the survey on the other side. So that was taken from there. When we put the septic in. We, we, we laser, we lasered it. And we lasered it before the health department got there and when they were there. So. A sand saw base is right on, a pipe is right on. And it, it's an engineer system. It's a. It, it's, it's made for wetlands. They put them in down in, on the ocean, even though it's not wetlands. The engineer insisted that we can put that in because he likes those systems and puts them everywhere. Lot more money, but it's a, it's a high-end, high-tech system. I, I forget, but, but uh, that's the first one I ever put in. When the septic was going in. I was there when they did the inspections. I was there when they did the measurements. And then they, they were on. So, and uh, I did not make any change with my contractor put in. By the way, it has to be certified to put that type of system in. You, you just can't be a septic guy and put that system in. So to say, yeah, he just threw crap in. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. Yes, there was stone. Yes, there was sand. It, it went in alternating box by box the way it's supposed to go. The height is supposed to be, and it went a little wider than it was supposed to be. Wide is better than now, uh, wider. Uh, cost me one, but it's not wider. But everything, and he wouldn't, he wouldn't budge. He, he actually tried to change it. He actually tried to change it and. August stuck up with me and said, no, it's not, they changed the engineer's drawing. Engineer came down and he said, you're not changing my drawing. And he fought for about a half hour. So it went in, everything went in within, within reason. You know, with your condition, within reason, because meatwork was there. So. But now, talking about the garage and the corner house and the two sixty-eight, the two seventy-one and all, all that kind of stuff. The, the actual house is two seventy, is two seventy-one. So the actual floor of the house is about the same height. As, as the road, it's about four inches low because it's point two, whatever. So, but the garage itself, the garage slab is two sixty-nine. Point six. Right? So that's a foot lower. So my garage is a foot lower than the stinking road. If anybody's got a worry, it's me, with water coming in. When we put the driveway in, it was supposed to be dirt. We decided to go with asphalt. So the driveway comes in, it comes down, goes over the septic, comes down towards the garage. So we took two. Driver from the garage pitched it this way slightly, going over and over the septic pitch there. So guess what? It makes a little swell. We tried to pitch it, to bring it over to where the dirt areas, where we see some of the water. Coming down from the road, we did not want to pitch it the far way going to the right. Gets all the water from the road comes from there and goes down there. So we took the driveway and we tilted it just a little bit. To send it over to the other side, to kind of even up where the direction of, of the water is gonna go. Did we get it perfect? I don't know. We got, it's pretty about close. Yeah, maybe that one little part of it, that's it. And if you noticed, I left a space between the house and the driveway turnaround, which is asphalt. And between the house, which is stone. And the pitches he showed, the water piling up here in the little winter, we had loom pile right there. So yeah, the water couldn't get out because the loom was there. We, we got caught, that's, it got frozen, so it stayed there. So winter time. He's showing pictures that we screwed up because of the looms there in the wintertime. That's not the case. So we took that out, to put stone, to crush stone in and let the water try to run. Go towards the neighbor's swell and down to the pipe and take out. So we worked, we worked out to try to. The neighbor's swell and down to the pipe and take up. So we worked, we worked out to try to make it work. It's a perfect, not, yeah, it's a pretty darn quote. It's like ninety five percent better than what it was when we had all the piles and stuff. But he's taking a lot of pitches, mixing, matching different phases of construction and saying the spinal, the spinal construction.
I, I'd like to ask you a question about this. As you were watching the testimony. The opponent. How many of the pictures did you see were taken of the final grading? As opposed to how many that were taken during the actual.
I don't, I, I don't.
You didn't see any?
None of those, I, they, they were there. They didn't bother me because the final rating is pretty, it's pretty much what was there. We brought everything back. To where it was first.
I'm asking for our clarification.
I don't, I don't.
Did see a lot of.
I have to, yeah, I have to take a.
And were there?
Each one by.
Were there actually any final grading?
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can show you which ones are, you know, more closer to the final than are closest to the final, which are enduring construction and not during construction.
Um, I have, I have one final inspection pictures. Okay, I can show.
He hasn't, so he hasn't done his presentation of pictures yet.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you, yes.
Like, once she's done, we, we both knew. The one thing, the other thing that didn't come up in, in the conversation. But before I bought the property. Um, I went out there. So there was water. Way down in the back as well and, and even before anything was touched, that property was used by the Wilsons and others to dump. All their dirt and their gravel and all of that.
Sorry, we can't take any others.
So. So there, there was stuff there that we had to, had to get rid of. That stopped a lot of the flow that claiming that, you know, it just naturally went. It, it just, there was a lot of, a lot of piles of stuff there as, as well. Let me. We had to take care of that.
I just needed to divert on a question. Uh, that is City Norwich property. Does anybody else, is that the rest ward back there?
The rest of it was about two thousand, maybe, maybe fifteen hundred feet behind.
So it is back.
Yeah, way over Spalding Street, yeah.
So that's.
Yeah.
The property behind you is actually the city's buffer between residential property and the rest.
Yeah, it's the world. Yeah, the world. It's called the world.
Thank you.
Was that rez, rez two, I think rez three, rez two, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So Rich would like to do his presentation of pictures right now, if that's okay.
Um, so.
Before we get into that, I, I want to, I want to close with something that I think is important as well. Um, and I got more stuff. I just want one thing you need to know is when I first started the project, I had both Mr. Wilson, Juice myself and all that. He told me point blank he was going to make my life miserable because he wanted to buy the property. And he didn't get the property. And I can bring my Realtor in to perform that. And he was going to make my life miserable throughout the whole thing and not only ask. Um, I can get into more ways how it's happened, but I want to get that on the record. So this is not. I don't believe against the, the building department. We've had a thought and everything, all that, and everything's not always smooth, but it's not against the building department. This is, this is something against me personally that just wants to stop what I'm doing. And he's using them as a lever. Trying to use them as a lever. But from day one, he's told me you're going to do this and you've been doing it. And the reason it's taken a little longer for this to go on is I hurt my back. And the doctor told me I had to take fifteen weeks off. So I capped it and shut it down for the winter. And we started up in May. So I don't know, that, yeah, tip them off or whatever, but I, I put, I had two choices. Take the time off or get in that voyage. Or took the time off, took a little bit longer. But I do, I do think that he's trying to use the building department. Put a lever, so, right? So I can't sell a prop and I lose my, I'm, I'm losing money because I've had people come in and he's giving them bullshit. They, they walked away. Okay? And I, and I can't get into that because it's just going to be a case.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's just, yeah, let's leave it so that now.
Yeah. Well, yes, something you can.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So Rich, you want, since this is Rich's really presentation, he's the one being appealed. So are you done with this first of all?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can take a seat. Thank you.
So I mean, to, to kind of address some of the comments this evening. Um, what I did was I downloaded. My inspection pictures from my final inspection. Of the grading, there's no grass stuff and grown. Um, but I, and I also have one picture here, which I think is kind of relevant. Uh, this, this picture here, can you see it okay or do I need?
Thank you, thank you.
So this, this, in this picture, this picture was actually, um, sent to me by Dave Clawwell at the Health Department when it's out on inspection. So you can see in this picture, the flags is the property line. The majority of pounding is on the neighboring property. Um. I'm not an engineer. I don't design sites. I hear a lot of, he's pushing water to the neighbor, pushing water to the neighbor. In context, you think the fill that he put there, but you look where his property line is and the, the elevation of the neighbor. House being higher, the water coming down there. The neighbor's putting a lot more water towards this property than he's pushing over there. You may have felt it. Um, if I'm, am I incorrect, Jeff? On that assumption?
No, correct.
Okay. I just want to confirm.
You know?
Yeah. Cause I'm not an engineer, but I can look at the high ground here running water down to this low area, which is on the neighbor's property.
Sure, it's important to see the property line.
Right.
Rich, have you had a photo?
Yeah, so what I have here. So this is the right side of the house. Uh, these, these were the, the final inspection pictures when I was out there. Um, the certificate of zoning compliance is issued, holding the E N S bond until the one is established. Um, which it's been growing in now. And I'll just. Okay, this is, this is kind of standing with my back to the garage. Looking towards the neighbor's house and you can see that elevation change in that house. There. And then. This area here, I mean, so this slope comes down and the property line is in this area right here. Next. And this is stepping back, kind of with my back up towards facing the telephone pole, kind of looking down the garages where you see the shadow of the house here. And this is that area. And then this is looking down the side of the house. And then this is kind of looking, you know, from up further up the driveway and it down. And then you can even see in the picture, I mean, there is. There is kind of a swell when it down through here. It's got the drain. I'm not.
Is the drain visible from this picture at all?
Uh. If you zoom in. It's right here and this is, it had some, uh, at this time, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the stuff to keep the.
It had a filter fabric on top of it right there.
You guys, the top drain, I think if you come this way, you may have caught the other, the bottom drain, see, over here, right there. Right in that area, the pipe goes and the hole's running and then it comes up under it and goes out. So we extended.
Is that in this area?
What's the?
Siri coming on.
Oh. Excuse me. That green light, that's the end of.
Say who, you have to say who you are speaking so that the clerk can't see who's speaking.
Okay.
Green lights, the end of.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's been in every picture and I've been wondering what that is. All right, Rich, do you have any more tonight that you'd like to think?
I don't have anything more this evening.
So Chairman, um, I would say that's, you know, in the applicant has agreed to it because they want to have more membership here for next month. That you could make a, a motion to continue this, uh, this, this public hearing for this appeal for your July eighth meeting. And the only reason that would change is if there was obviously not going to be a quorum that night. We would let the applicants know that.
Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to, uh, table.
Or continue.
And continue till the next, uh, regularly scheduled June eighth. Zoning Board, July, I'm sorry, July eighth, zoning board of appeal. Here. Meeting.
Where's the line? We're, we'll, we'll do that next week.
The next month because they've done this and then so write down what you want. So clarify, break down what you want to say and how you want to respond to it. Yes, the minutes will be available and the, in the video will be available online soon. So you'll be able to look at that to prepare too. Okay?
This is not, we're not closing.
The last word of the next meeting.
What?
Who gets the last word, the last, the next meeting, July? As opposed to me talking first and then everyone talking about.
I think what, what?
I don't.
Can you clarify? Hold on.
I'm going to tell you right now, I don't appreciate the process.
Okay, so what, what normally what we do is the, the, like I said, the applicant or the person speaks first. Richard has the rebuttal. You will have an opportunity to re-speak to that. He will also have a chance to rebuttal and then. They're not going to have discussion. No, they can't discuss.
I'm going to go home. You're closing the event, but not the hearing. The hearing continues.
There'll be no more discussion tonight at all.
We're going to, we'll do our final business and so it's also me, the next thing I get to talk last, right?
You, you, the chairman could allow you to talk last. Yes, they would like to.
Presumably the, uh, I'm the. Chairman for tonight. I am not the chairman, if you want. Acting chairman, I guess you call that. The Chairman Mark will be.
Yeah, so what would happen again? You both have an opportunity.
Just like you have been the whole time. And tonight is the problem.
Sorry.
Hold on. You're not, you're kind of out of order. You're out of order right now.
For the last two years, the builder gets the last word is slightly first the builder. It is the term where it is and I don't.
Point of order, please. There is a motion on the floor.
Yes.
It has been seconded.
Who seconded it? Cause I'm, I got. Thank you.
And the motion is. To suspend tonight's hearing and continue it on the next regular hearing. There is not, to be no more discussion.
They have motion to second.
Chairman, we need a vote. Need a few seconds.
Okay, all right. Uh, all those in favor?
Bob Phoenix, I, Ed Everdott.
Donnie.
Three more, nine. Most passes.
That, that is to continue. That is the motion and what we voted on to continue to July eight.
All right, so where are we standing here? Um.
Okay, so. Sorry. The staff updates, Rich, is your next?
Yeah, I'm staff. So staff updates, I don't have any updates other than, uh, we had talked about having a special ruling. Uh, on the seventeen, uh, which we won't be having. Uh, I don't have all the details, but that appeal is going to mediation.
Okay.
It's going to mediation, the mediator.
Oh.
I'd like to collect the information they passed out so I keep it for you for next month so I don't think it's lost. Like these ones, yeah. I can just keep this, yeah, that one.
So that's all I have for information. Thanks.
I have an update for you under staff. That's okay.
Do you have something?
Yes, so, yeah, I have yours as well. No, um, that one was decided upon or not?
No.
Oh, no, that's everything.
Rich, I'm sorry.
Just, just, all I need is what was passed out by the applicant.
Oh, far as view is mediated? Yeah, let's go into mediation. Yes. Good. So we're out of that, right? Well, not, not fully, not fully. You know, it'll go to mediation, it'll go back.
And I'm going to grab your summary, please, David.
No, no, I mean, it's just.
Everything else if you want. I think the other thing for Rich, correct?
Right.
These were, okay. So, um, I want to give an update if that's okay. So, um, the, the City Norwich Planning Department, we are working, I don't know if Rich has filled the set with you. Um, we are working on zoning regulations updates. So we will be, um, so Rich has been involved, but because he's the only one in his job and does an amazing job, but he's very busy. Um, we have been working on it, myself and the city, um, city planner. And Rich has been consulted on a lot of items in this zoning regulation. We finally yesterday got. A draft of the draft, if that makes sense. We've been working on it for months. It's still got a lot of red lines in it and things. We got to fill in the blanks. Um, I'm going to go through that by neck, the end of next week, get it in another iteration. And then what we're, obviously I'll be talking to Rich. Actually not next week, the week after. We only have two weeks to work on it. And then what the plan is to reach, be, again with Rich, to go over some things that he feels should be involved in the zoning regulations, new things. And then we will be having, um, uh, some public meetings. And we'll be, well, first we're going to have stakeholder meetings with, of course, the council because they are the zoning authority of the city. And the current charter and then a submission on the city plan. Um, since the Z B A really, um. That you, your, your role is to, um, consider applications to waive zoning regulations. Um, you don't necessarily need to comment on them, but you can come to the public meetings. So we won't be really soliciting information necessarily from you. Um, however, we're looking at things that maybe setbacks will be reduced. We're looking at things, maybe a little bit more lot coverage. Things that you have a lot of applications for. So if we see that that's something, a consistent variance that's being asked for a lot. We're looking at that and going, well, maybe we need to fix that in the regs. So the, the ultimate thing is you shouldn't have as many variance applications really in front of you in theory. So that you would, um, fixing the zoning regulations so that there truly is issues that are in front of you that are not.
Issue is, for instance, the neighborhood that's down across. Going to Fabrics.
Yes.
That was turned commercial, never developed. And now every time those people want to do something, they have to get a variant.
Yes.
And that type of situation, we would like to see as a board.
To go back.
Authority to go to richer to make the determination that it's okay to go ahead.
So we can write, so, so I guess what I would say, because I'm not speaking for what it's completed document is like, yeah, and we've talked about it. There still is a lot of interest for the city. Okay, let's put this way. Mahan School is a Mahan that's back there. Mahan School is owned by the city. It's going to be eliminated. They're not going to be using that one down there. Those houses are sort of adjacent to Mahan in that area. So from a purely planning standpoint, it doesn't. You probably would not zone that back to, to res, keep, you know, to residential again, because now you have even more of a reason to potentially have a big commercial user there. So. But however, knowing this is an issue for them, this particular neighborhood, there could be something in the zoning regulations that say specifically. In, I think it's the planned commercial zone, let's just say. Properties that are on the planned commercial zone, the existing residential properties that are on lots of blah, blah, blah size. May be allowed to expand their footprint by certain, certain percentage or just some kind of language that gives them a little bit of a caveat of it out. Without necessarily going, hey, we're going to rezone that as residential again, because it does have potential for commercial, but I understand that limitation there.
Tonight's app.
Yes.
The house was compliant at thirty feet once upon a time. And then we decided in our infinite wisdom that fifty feet are needed.
Yes.
And half this house is now.
And, and, and that's, like I said, we're looking at setbacks. So he made that setback for fifty feet and whatever their forty zone. It may not be fifty feet anywhere. It may be thirty feet and he'll be compliant again. So we're, we're going to look at those setbacks and see how they're realistic. Because we can look at the whole zone quickly, look at the, you know, look at where the houses are and go, hey, everybody's consistently at thirty feet. Why don't we make just a setback at thirty feet? Or something so that we want to fix things. I guess what I would just say is we want to fix things to make it easier. But some things might change and make it, you have different variances, you know, trying to say so. It, we, we won't know, but I just want to let you know the public hearings, um, my goal is to have them started sometime this summer, which is hard because it's June now. But if we could start at least having public meetings in July, adoption in the fall, because we would, you know.
If you make them, it ain't convenient.
Believe me, we've, no, we would really want, we do want public involvement, but I just want to know and there'll be, there'll be different things. There'll be lots of, but the council, again, it's ultimately up to the councils to adopt zoning regulations. That is already matter.
I mean, I'm, for every individual who comes for variance, I'm sure there's multiple people who. Who don't go to that effort and don't make improvements to the house. And I don't think that's in Norwich's best interest for people.
Uh, cause it's too hard. Yes, I know. I get it. I get it.
To, to, you know.
And so we're looking at like, for example, there's a neighborhood near McKinley and I think it's our, maybe our forty zone. But the reality is those lots are, there's no way that they're forty thousand square feet. They're all like twenty thousand square feet or less. So why is that? Why did that change that? So some changes that were made many years ago, which was kind of the anti saying, intensive zoning and saying, hey, we don't want more houses to be squished in here. Well, now because of housing needs and stuff, it's like, okay, make them twenty thousand square feet. And maybe there is the occasional forty thousand square foot lot in there that might be able to be split. To make another single family house there. So, but, and that'll help. But, and that'll help those ones that are, they'll be more compliant, cause they're not compliant, because they're, you know, on a forty thousand zone, but they have fifty foot setbacks, let's just say. And it's really a ten thousand or twenty thousand foot lot. So we are looking at that, and we're, cause we are in, and, um, so, there'll be changes.
We've heard your frustrations.
Yes, yes, we've heard them, and we may not fix everything, and you know, it's hard, because you, you think you're doing, it's a whole city. So you know, you're, you may have areas that go, shoot, but I'm hoping that within a year, if we adopt them. If we have to come back, we do more comprehensive changes, like yearly, and go, okay, maybe we missed this, we, we visit it. Yeah, so, but, that's it, so that was, I just wanted you to be involved in the process and know that we are, we do hear you, and we know that you exist.
We, we do appreciate that.
This is the chairman. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
And I need a second.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I hope you can make it on July fifth, because that please plan.